Hello, hello. How you doing?
I'm good, how are you?
Doing good.
Thank you, Mike.
Yeah, exactly. Get an open record request for your staff. That's extreme, that's more like an app online.
Homework.
Homework.
That's a homework?
Yes, what it look like? How you doing?
Good, you alright?
We're gonna be busy.
Yeah, but if you're asked for... We can open record requests.
I see what you're saying.
Yes, yes.
I mean, separation is...
We're going to call this agenda meeting to order. We'll start with our prayer and our pledge allegiance. Mr. Young will pray for us. Mr. Vizanaw will lead us in our pledge.
Dear God, we just paused to say thank you for your goodness, for your love, for your grace, and for your mercy in our life. Thank you for working in each of our lives and in this body collectively. May the things that we do today be honoring and uplifting to you, and they may serve the citizens of Lake Charles. In your name we pray, amen.
Let's face the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Renee.
I appointed chairman to review bids to purchase row-based limestone aggregate per specifications for use by the Public Works Department. Public hearing and consideration of the Lake Charles Planning and Zoning Commission's decision to deny a request for variances in order to construct a new 1,600 square-foot accessory building, which would occupy 85% of the floor area of the existing principal structure versus the allowable 40% within a residential zoning district at 124 West Claude Street. Public hearing and consideration of the Lake Charles Planning and Zoning Commission's decision to approve as amended a variance in order to maintain an existing unpermitted ground sign versus required monument-style sign and allow setback of 10 feet 2 inches from front property line versus required minimum 15 feet within a mixed-use zoning district at 2529 Lake Street. An ordinance ordering demolition and authorizing the City of Lake Charles entered into an agreement for demolition of a structure located at 1517 Martha Street, Don Eric Mohammed owner. Another demolition at 312 General Patton Willie Morris Smith Senior Estate and John Arjean Mitchell Smith owners. Another demolition at 3214 Louisiana Avenue Edgar Madrigal owner. Another demolition at 211 North Hodges Street Bobby No Middle Name LaFleur and June Marie Jubert LaFleur owners. Another demolition at 612th Street Stratton Oakmont Properties LLC owner. Another demolition at 712 William Street Freddie Mark Johnson Estate owner. Another demolition at 2611 Ernie Street Rear Porch Only James Darrell Talbot and Tammy DeVita Sorry Talbot owners. Another demolition at 2901 Creole Street Two Houses Warren Blanchett owner. Another demolition at 501 North Booker Street Elijah Hancock Estate and Lucille Jones Hancock Estate owners. Another demolition at 716 Royal Street Workshop Garage Only James White Helms Jr. and Henry Elise Ligon Helms owners. Another demolition at 2915 Legion Street Dwayne Brown and Bernita L. Brown owners. Another demolition at 2623 Lynn Street Batson Stevens Jr. Annie Doya Stevens AV owners. Another demolition at 2923 General Collins Louis Haley and Dorothy Mae Hicks Haley owners, subject to a tax sale to the state Louisiana. Another demolition at 2512 Tupelo Street Lisa K. Guillory Cormy and Gina Gell Guillory Malonsa owners. Another demolition at 718 North Alliance Street Jonathan Gray and Jaquay Jackson Gray owners. Another demolition at 2310 North Old Highway 171 Garage slash Born Charles Richard Frank and Dana Ann Gilchrist owners. Another demolition at 3023 General Twining Gertrude Anne Savoy and George Watkins Savoy Estate owners. Another demolition at 604 Craft Street Shed Garage George P. Natale and Estelle M. Natale Trust owner. Another demolition at 3903 Auburn Street Nelson Bernard owner. Ordinances for final action and ordinance accepting the lowest responsible bid and authorizing the City of Lake Charles to enter into an agreement for project number CP 3469 McNeese Sidewalk Carbine Road to Lake Crest Boulevard and amend the budget as necessary. An ordinance authorizing the City of Lake Charles to negotiate excess workers' compensation insurance by accepting the lowest responsible bid for the period beginning October 1st, 2025 through October 1st, 2026. An ordinance authorizing the City of Lake Charles to allow more than 20% cumulative increase for a change order for project number CP 2894 Nelson Road 24-inch sewer line CIPP lining. An ordinance authorizing the City of Lake Charles entered into an agreement with environmental technical cells to repair the fine screen, aqua screen at wastewater plant B.C. An ordinance amending sections 5-3014 Figure 1, 5-3024 Figure 2, 5-3034 Figure 3, 5-3044 Figure 4, 5-3045 Figure 5, and 5-3053 Figure 5 of Chapter 24 zoning of the City of Lake Charles Code of Ordinances relative to additional 5-foot setback along arterial or collector corridors and federal or state design routes or additional 10-foot for facilities that include fuel cells per Section 24-5-20310. An ordinance amending Section 5-3042O of Chapter 24 of the Lake Charles zoning ordinance relative to permitted uses within business districts, drive-in or drive-through facilities. An ordinance amending Section 7C2 of Chapter 23 of the City of Lake Charles Code of Ordinances relative to exterior storage areas. An ordinance adding Section 5-20332 of Chapter 24 of the Lake Charles zoning ordinance relative to curb cuts. An ordinance accepting the lowest responsible quote and authorizing the City of Lake Charles entered into an agreement for central auditorium theater repairs. Resolutions, a resolution setting date for public hearing on condemnation of structures located at 1,900 Prejon Drive Plasvendome Apartment Homes LLC owner with the companion ordinance. A resolution setting date for public hearing on condemnation of structures located at 633 South Franklin Street Shed Only Laura Gaddy Glenn and Leonard Gerard Gaddy owners with the companion ordinance. A resolution setting date for public hearing on condemnation of structures located at 1030 13th Street Carport Only Russell William Young and Natasha Lynn Miller Young owners with the companion ordinance. A resolution setting date for public hearing on condemnation of structures located at 2502 Ruth Street Lily Ann Duhon and David T. Huddleston Estate owners with the companion ordinance. A resolution setting date for public hearing on condemnation of structures located at 2713 General Vandenberg Linda Gray Guidry Estate owner with the companion ordinance. A resolution setting date for public hearing on condemnation of structures located at 2915 Creole Street RH Rental Properties LLC owner with the companion ordinance. A resolution setting date for public hearing on condemnation of structures located at 1901 7th Street Earl Joseph Banks Jr., James Anthony Anderson, Bessie Mae Joyner Estate, Emmett Joyner Estate, and Sheila Marie LeBlanc Ozan owners, subject to a tax sale to the state Louisiana with the companion ordinance. A resolution setting date for public hearing on condemnation of structures located at 1023 14th Street Joshua John Common and Angela A. Aklis owners with the companion ordinance. A resolution setting date for public hearing on condemnation of structures located at 813 1/2 East Preon Lake Road David Lynn Tinker II and Kenzie Pauline Stone Kinker owner, Tinker owners with a companion ordinance. A resolution authorizing the City of Lake Charles to advertise to receive sale bids for project number CP 3237 WWTPA Basin A06 Sewer Rehabilitation with a companion ordinance. Ordinances for introduction, introduction of an ordinance creating the positions of Chief of Administration and Chief of Operations within the administrative division of the Lake Charles Five Department and to provide for the qualifications, duties, and responsibilities for such positions and other related matters. Introduction of an ordinance authorizing the City of Lake Charles to accept Kramer Court, Rutledge Court, Fletcher Court, and Hemstedt Court in Autumn Crest Phase 2 subdivision, including public right-of-ways, drainage, water, and sewer lines, sewer and traffic control devices for ownership and maintenance by the City of Lake Charles. The City of Lake Charles will not take ownership of the detention ponds. Introduction of an ordinance authorizing the renewal of the professional services agreement between the City of Lake Charles and the PCAR group. And that's all that I have, the rest are companion ordinances.
All right. Mr. Weatherford.
I don't have anything to add.
Mr. Bibbo.
First, I want to thank every... the city for fixing that barrier I had on Opale Boulevard. I got a lot of phone calls saying they appreciate it. What I really want to discuss is the area we call the terrace. I know it may not be the city, but I'm getting a lot of calls that the terrace looks terrible. Like everywhere at the house, the grass is high, and most time I go... I try and go speak to the people before I turn them in to property standards. And most of them confused of whether or not their house is going to get fixed, whether they in this buyout area or whatever. I think we need to get in communication with the parish so they have a better understanding that they still need to take care of their property if they're not in this buyout area. And I need to know, because people asking me, what are we going to do with the area that's being bought, that's already purchased? To my understanding, and maybe I was wrong, but we supposed to add like a retention pond or something back there?
Yes, my understanding that that area, once those homes are demolished, there's going to be a water retention pond to help alleviate some of the water that's going up Opale Boulevard.
I think they have an area large enough now that's clear, maybe two houses, I wrote back the other day that hadn't been, and I get a lot of complaints about those two houses that's just sitting back there. You know, we almost getting into the hurricane season, I don't know why we waiting to fix the area. If we... if the plan was to put a retention pond, what's the wait? We done bought the property, they cutting it. We need to go ahead and do it before something happen, and we ain't accomplishing anything. But if we go back there, it's bad.
Mr. Bibbo, we're working with the parish on that as a dry retention pond, and what I'd like to try to do, maybe we can set up a meeting, get the parish involved, and get you there, and we can kind of bring you up to date to where they're at.
And where they at on it. And for short, we still have a... behind the Kroger parking lot is still like a drop-your-car-off-and-leave. They still dropping RV cars, they're just abandoning, they still just leaving it, and the people that are right across the street is complaining more about it now. So, just wanted to throw that out there.
That's it, Mr. Bibbo?
Yeah, until y'all start, then I might have something else. All right, y'all go ahead.
Mr. Fundell?
No, I don't have anything. Thank you.
Mr. Young?
Nothing for tonight.
Mr. Vizanaw?
I just want to ask, I know there was a Mr. McKee here talking about questioning, he requested a traffic study at Patrick and LeGrande Street. I talked to Matt, I can't remember his name, that works in traffic. Mr. Link? Yes, and I know he told me he's working on the traffic study. I just didn't know, he called me and asked me if he should attend the meeting. I'm just unfamiliar about when we would be able to look at the traffic study, evaluate it, and come to some kind of yes-or-no answer or whatever. I don't know what to tell him, when to come back and say, hey, we're ready to talk about his request, because his request was, you know, some kind of crosswalk, school zone, something to kind of slow traffic down because of the parking lots across the street from the daycare. And I just don't know when to tell him. I'm going to try to keep him up to date. It's not even in my district, but my grandkids go to school there. I'm not going to... not going to shadow that, it's a fact, but... and the only reason I say this is because I see the amount of foot traffic across there. So, I do believe it's necessary, but if somebody can update me about when, you know, they evaluate a traffic study, I'll let him know.
We will get you an update on it tomorrow. May not have the answer, but we'll get you an update and let you know where it stands.
Yeah, I just want to know what to tell him. And I noticed we approved a 20% overage on a project on Nelson Road, and I know that was because of vexes and the boring underground for the network lines or whatever. Let me say, I know several people have brought that up because they're doing it all over town. The area that's not in the city, but east and west Savannah, lost their entire neighborhood of water almost for a 24-hour period because of vexes on Goche Road. I got a call the last two days about streetlights being out at Graywood. I spoke to Mr. James Marshall, and he informed me that it's probably not 100%, but about 99% sure it's because of vexes going under there cutting lines. And I know those people have to do, but we have got to police them better, and I sure hope that we're going after some expenses that the city might have to recoup because they're just doing it everywhere. They're damaging stuff everywhere, and I understand going underground, it's likely you're going to hit something, but it's just happening everywhere. And I know several people have brought it up.
We'll get with Public Works, and if we are... there's some damages caused, we'll go out there.
Yeah, well, Mr. Marshall, him and I spoke, and I know he's aware of it, but I just know it keeps happening everywhere. Lastly, and I didn't speak to Ms. Paula about it, but I know property standards, and I know I missed the last meeting, I apologize, but I know it was brought up about an additional person maybe for property standards to help out, and I got several calls about areas on Country Club Road and down Big Lake Road where litter is just accumulating. And I don't know how that falls under property standards. Is it the person that owns the business there that's responsible for cleaning the trash out of the ditch? If so, how do you hold somebody there responsible to clean that ditch? But it's just happening all over the city, it's not just in my district. I don't know what to do about it. Somebody brought up to me, if I can, Mr. Doug for a moment, why don't y'all hire some part-time people that you don't have to pay benefits, that just go out there and police litter? I don't know if that's a possibility, but I definitely wanted to bring it up because it's everywhere, so.
True statement. We have a designated property standards inspector that is solely responsible for checking out these big-box businesses, goes in, speaks to the manager, tells them to clean it up. If they don't clean it up, we'll send with the administrative hearing for fine purposes. All the property standards inspectors, you know, we're down a couple right now, we're working on filling those positions, but all of them are responsible for that also. So, it's on their radar, if they see it, they will report it, they will talk to the business owner if at all possible. If not, it will be sent to the administrative hearing officer for compliance.
But if it's a ditch, let's say on Country Club Road...
They're still responsible.
They're Krogers, they're responsible for that ditch.
If it's coming from their site, they'll be responsible for it.
Okay, let's get started. I just want to let the councilmen know to try and help with the city being bombarded with this problem. For streetlights, when they out, Entergy has an app that's real good. If you go in there and you can put the app in, even though from your address, you can put another streets app in, and they'll come fix it. They fixed a couple of lights for me over the past week. The other thing, the other thing is, Mr. Bibbo bought that property up, and I'm going to comment on it because prior to you taking office, I was dealing with them on the same issues. There is another area in the village, in the terrace, that is considered the third phase of the buyouts. Now, when they going to do it, they said they waiting on more money, I checked with the parish. So, that's the problem with that issue. But also, I would like the city to take a look into, last year, maybe deep into the year, we had come up with an idea of maybe moving Mid-City Baseball from Huber Park to that area, getting with the parish and see if it was feasible, because it's a big enough area, and it would open the Huber Park up for some of the ideas, Mr. Bibbo, that are in the Lake Charles rebound for the Huber Park area. So, if we could swing that, that would really be good, because they got enough room to accommodate all what they want to do over there, plus another park by the old Budweiser plant. So, that was just bringing you up to speed on something that was talked about.
So, Mac, so how would that help for the retention pond? I worry about flooding.
Well, the retention pond is going to be built, but you can put the baseball field on top of the retention pond. It doesn't stop it.
Okay.
So, with that being said, moving on to the next thing, I want to introduce an ordinance, well, I want to amend an ordinance for the Enterprise Nelly Lutcher Culture District. And this, we've been having a lot of issues with what should be on the facade, what shouldn't be on the facade. I know when we did the Opale House on Opale Boulevard, we had the struggles, Doug, with the metal siding. We came up with it had to be an architectural siding, it couldn't be horizontal, I mean, it couldn't be vertical, it had to be horizontal.
Horizontal lap siding, that's correct.
So, I would like to amend, with Mr. Donald's permission, I spoke with him before, amend the ordinance to allow stucco in the enterprise extension. So, in other words, it would take out the fact that we have to brick the whole front of the building. So, it would make it easier, still look good, you know, for businesses that want to come to that area. So, I'd like us to consider an ordinance after we talk with planning to see if that's feasible.
I think that's an appropriate amendment to the allowance of finishes, of facade materials. You know, all over the rest of the city, commercial applications, they are allowed brick, stucco, architectural metal. So, allowing stucco in addition to brick and stone in the Nelly Lutcher overlay district, that's an appropriate use of materials. It's reasonable.
And I want to be clear that it's just going to affect the Nelly Lutcher overlay, not everything else in the district.
That's correct.
So, it would just be for the overlay.
Quick question, suggestion maybe? Is Hardy board allowed?
No, not in the Nelly Lutcher.
Is it allowed in other places?
Yeah.
It is allowed in other districts in the city, but Nelly Lutcher was specific to limiting the look and the feel of the building itself. And, you know, Hardy board is an approved material in other parts of the city, but not the Nelly Lutcher district. They wanted to give it some, you know, take that residential feel away and have a more commercial application feeling for those new structures.
Good. Just something to think about.
Yeah, I'd like to visit that again later.
We can put some things together to let you, you know, mull on it a little bit and see, see what you feel.
Because you got such a variety, everybody's different on that block.
Everybody's different.
I mean, nobody's, there's no conformity at all, so let's visit that.
Okay. The other thing, I don't know, according to my email, all the other councilmen have gotten it, but it's an email from the Southwest Louisiana Realtors Association. Did you get in there? Well, they talking about occupational licenses. So, in brief, what they want is, we respectfully request that the council consider adopting a local exemption for licensed real estate brokers and agents, as well as for property owners whose rentals are professionally managed by licensed brokers. This would ensure fairness while avoiding unnecessary duplication of state licenses. I think they want to be exempt from having to get permits or licenses, because they've already been licensed by the Realtors Association. I can forward that email to you.
Are they talking about occupational licenses?
Occupational licenses.
Okay.
That is different.
Yes, sir.
I'd also been contacted by Erica Celeste, the director of that organization, and I asked for a meeting with Ms. McDaniel to get a little bit more on the occupational license and what the city's position would be. Can I meet with her and then report back to the council?
That would be great. When is the last payment of our $90 million bond exactly due? Can, do y'all have a date of when it will be paid out? I know it was two payments of $5 million, but I just timeline before the end of the year, sometime next year? May of 2027? So, it's not one-time payment, we'll be paying on it?
We pay, we pay two payments a year, and so you pay principal and interest two times a year.
Okay, I was thinking it's two payments of $5 million.
No.
Okay, two payments a year. It equals $5 million, two payments in each time.
The four payments equal five, equal...
Got you.
Each, two payments equal $5 million, and the other two payments equal $5 million, so it's $10 million.
So, 2026, you said?
2027, May of 2027.
May 2027, all right. All right. In 2022, the council passed a pay raise. That pay raise was 2% for career and non-career police and police, 2.5% for firemen, and there was, this was in addition to the 2% longevity increase given annually to eligible employees. I'd like to know if the administration, or I'd like the administration to revisit it, because it's supposed to expire. This is the last year, they got the last portion of the 2%. I want to see if we can renew that for the next three years, basically do the same thing over again that we've done for the past few years, if it allows. So, I'd like for us to maybe sit down and discuss that.
Yeah, and that's actually the administration, finance, and HR, we've been sitting there talking about pay raises, the matrix, everything.
Okay.
Yeah, we're trying to work on that.
On the corner of Oregon and Mitchell and First Avenue in Texas, I have had requests from the neighbors over there to put slow speeding signs and slow children-at-play signs. I want to know if we can get a study done to see if it warrants it in that neighborhood, but I've been giving a lot, getting a lot of calls from them saying that kids playing in the street, but the cars are zooming in. So, if we could take a look into that.
See, Oregon and Mitchell, and what else?
Oregon and Mitchell and First Avenue in Texas. It's in the alleys, and just FYI, the alleys are considered streets for the city. Can we, well, I'll get to that later. Crosswalks.
Mr., I just want to make sure, you're just trying to put a sign up that says, "Slow children at play"?
Yes, maybe at the, like we did in Opale, we put them at the end of the, when they turned, and they already knew. The crosswalk intersections of Second Avenue and Opale Boulevard is dangerous. First of all, my neighborhood did a neighborhood walkthrough on last week, and a bunch of residents got together along with Memorial Hospital, which is sponsoring, you know, our neighborhood doing that, and we came up with a couple of things. The crosswalk at the intersections of Second Avenue and Opale Boulevard, that is very dangerous, where it curves, you know, yeah. We need the streets marked for pedestrians to walk across, and maybe a signal light there with a timer on it so that they can cross, if, you know, if we could afford that, if budget calls for it or can allow it. We need, I know that this is, may not be a city issue, but I'm going to bring it anyway, the replacement of the Opale columns, they got it at Second Avenue and 12th, Fourth and 12th, Enterprise and Second, and it's another one. The Opale brick pillars that are there showing that you're coming in, I want to see if we can get something done with those, or take them out altogether. I mean, it looks good for the neighborhood, but they crumbling, and they just sitting in the pile on the corner on some of them. 812 Iberville Street, this is a repeat offender. We reported him three or four times. They go there sometimes, they cut the grass, and as the years pass, nothing is being done about it, and the residents are getting hostile. 812 Iberville, I don't think anybody lives in that house, but somebody keeps it up, but they hadn't been doing a good job, and there's still a car parked under the garage that's been there for, since I've been on the council last time. So, if we could take a look at that. The gas station on the corner of Opale and I think it's Astor Street, they need to do something with that sign and the grass, and this is a repeat offender as well. Sidewalks. The east side of Opale to 18th Street, and there's a big buckle on the south side of 18th Street and Second Avenue. These are sidewalks, and I don't want us to be held liable because somebody tripping or run over that or try to come up with a case. Also, do we have an update on the sidewalk that I requested from Fourth Avenue to Opale on the north side?
Herman Stevens, engineering.
Right, Mr. Herman.
We did an estimate on that sidewalk. The project could range anywhere from $300,000 to $500,000. The project could range anywhere from $300,000 to $500,000. It's not currently in the budget. We could add it to our CIP program and determine priority going forward, but we currently don't have any funds associated with it now.
Do we have funds to piecemeal it? In other words, my real concern was from where cotton start up into the old Market Basket parking lot, not to go all the way across the parking lot all the way to Fifth Avenue. I was just trying to give the kids a sidewalk to walk, and when they get to the concrete at Market Basket, they can walk on the concrete.
I can evaluate that, there were also some trees in the way.
Okay.
We don't want to lose trees, and it could also result in buying some property to make those connections. But I'll evaluate just the section that you looked at, and if we can do it, we'll do it.
And if I can get the owners to donate the property for the sidewalk?
That changes things.
Okay.
But currently, we don't have a great sidewalk budget, especially for a project like this. In the meantime, there is a sidewalk on the south side for Oak Park Boulevard that would accomplish the same goal. So anyone in that area can go across the street, hit that sidewalk, and still get to school.
Okay.
Thanks.
Mention the gas, yeah, thank you, Mr. Stevens. Sidewalks again, I ain't gonna do that. I just seen we updated the Johnson Hall project. How are we gonna go about doing that, the place Vendome? Are we gonna contact them, or are we gonna handle it just like we would do a blighted property?
We make, we try to make contact with them and put them on notice, it's a condemnation. So you gotta go through that process.
Okay, all right. Memorial Hospital, they need trash cans around that whole facility because the trash on 18th, on Third Avenue, Oak Park, is getting to be a bit much because there's no trash cans there. When people come out the parking lots and where they park at, it's no trash cans there. So if we can get with them, I don't know if we can force them to do it, but it would really help out a lot. Also, on the backside, do we know if we own that sidewalk that they took out? They put parking back there, where they park at an angle on 18th Street on the backside. And if I'm not mistaken, I think we used to have sidewalk there, but because of the parking, it's no more sidewalk.
You are correct. That was installed 1999. So I'll have to go back and research to determine were sidewalks there. I know they went through a public hearing process to have that off-street parking, what we call dive-in parkings, but that was 25 years ago.
Okay, well, I'd like to get that checked on because I think we can still squeeze a sidewalk in there where them cars are. The moratorium, we put a moratorium in place if I'm not mistaken. We spoke about gas stations from Highway 14 up Oak Park to Enterprise, up to McNee Street, and back around the same way. We had, I think it was 14 or 16 gas stations within that time. I think we put a moratorium on gas stations.
Hello again.
Yes, sir.
There is not a moratorium on gas stations. We changed the ordinance to not allow them as of right in the business zoning district. So every convenience store, retail, I won't call it convenience, retail sales with fuel service is required to go through a conditional use approval.
Okay.
Which could be appealed to the commission, which could be appealed to the council. So they are not allowed as of right in any district in the city. They are required to go through a conditional use process.
Do we have a stipulation on how close they can be to each other?
No, we do not. That's the, that's the purpose of the review process, you know? Once we, if we get an application, we can review that. It goes to the council, or it goes to the planning commission, and those, those aspects can be reviewed during that process.
Mr. Marks, if I can recall, I think they also put a stipulation in there that you had to have a greater setback along the roadway, so the property had to be a little bit larger. So some provisions were put in place to stringent it a little bit, but also to have the conditional use permit.
Okay. The other thing is, Ms. Paula, this might be a bit much, and somebody may have mentioned it before. Can we get a route sheet for planning and zoning for a district? In other words, in my district, where are they supposed to go, or what have they seen? I say that because a lot of times we get duplicate complaints, and I'd like to be able to tell my constituents, hey, we went and looked at this on January 13th. It takes a month or so for this process to kick in, so give me a little time. As opposed to them coming and saying something, and I don't know, you know, when the last time they looked at it, or the grass been cut, or whatever the case may be.
Hello again.
Yes.
We can provide a case log and give you an idea where, areas that we're targeting or hitting at certain points, so we can provide that to you.
Yeah, because I just want to.
It may not be perfect, but it'd give you a generalization.
Good, that's all I need. Yeah, just stay, just stay. That's about it, that's all I got, Mr. Harvey.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have a couple of things, a lot of things, actually. First thing I'm gonna start off with, a couple of months ago, we discussed the Motel 6 property that was on Highway 171. There was a group of investors that came up. We actually was about to deem the property blighted. They said that they would come up to code, they removed some old tires that was there, they took the boys down, but it's been over a year now, we haven't heard anything. That's the old Motel 6 property, that's on 171. I was trying to get an update on that. I know we were lenient because they were trying to clean the property up, but they said that they will put it back into commerce within a year, and it's been dormant.
I believe, I believe I know the developer you're talking about. I will do a check on that to see where they are in the process of getting that back into commerce and cleaned up.
Okay, all right, thank you, I appreciate the update on that. Signage of businesses, I've noticed that some downtown businesses have changed their signs. I think it was part of LC Rebound, or it was something that happened previously where we had a discussion where we talked about incentivizing people who would change their signs. But there was an ordinance in place that you had to have a sign with your businesses and everything, and it had to be a working sign with lights and everything. But that is not being upheld, especially downtown. I know Wendy's just changed theirs, I want to say, one of the places on Broad Street, but I know there's extensive sign damage all along Highway 171 and MLK. How do we go about approaching those businesses?
We have an inspector that somewhat focuses probably 30 to 40% of his time on damaged signs, getting those corrected and fixed, and they do have an opportunity to make application for the sign incentive program to convert it to the most appropriately ground sign, so we have those ordinances in place. Now, if someone did something without a permit, we can go investigate that and find out. But in general, new signage has to meet the current code, which is a monument or ground sign. Now, if they're, have an existing sign and they're just changing the face of the sign, they don't have to comply with the monument sign unless it's removed totally or totally destroyed.
What about the signs that's been damaged since the hurricane?
If you give me a location, we can make sure.
It's several, I mean, I'll get them, but I'm thinking that we have a person that's doing that. It seem like they would notice that when they canvassing the area. I can get you a list, but I'm just saying.
I can get you the list that he's working on, it's a continuous process.
Okay, so what happens when a person, like say, for instance, we're five years from the hurricane? What happens if we know that person has made no effort to change that sign?
We can send them a violation notice and cite them for non-compliance.
Do you know we're doing that?
Yes, yes.
All right, the only reason I'm asking is because there's a lot of business owners downtown that were complaining about this as well, and they just feel like it was no result. So we can communicate that we are finding these.
We are actively pursuing damaged and non-compliant signs.
Got you. The next thing I have is, a couple of weeks ago, I asked that we try to have a meeting or put something together to discuss the ditch issues that's been in District A for a very long time. Still waiting to hear back about that. But at the same time, about a year ago, we qualified for a brick grant. What's the status of that? Because the brick grant was aimed at closing ditches, right? And I think if, I was told that it would go off of priority based off of what the third party said, but.
The brick grant was a $100,000 planning grant. And so we have a consultant looking at the ditches, and that's all the grant paid for. Once the study is done, which it's probably about 85 to 90% done, once the grant, once that planning part is done, all of the results will be submitted back into the grant, the brick, or whatever it's called now, program. And then they'll have another round of funding that will help pay for the findings of the grant.
So the brick grant was never meant to actually do the work, it was just for the consultant?
It's a planning grant.
Okay.
A lot of grants start, they have first, they have phases, and so Phase 1 is typically planning, which helps the municipality or whomever work with a consultant to plan out the work and scope out the work. And then you have to go back for Phase 2, apply for Phase 2, which would be the actual construction grants.
Do you know, I know you said it's almost complete, do you know about the estimated timeline?
I would know, I don't, I mean, maybe within the next few months, they should have their work completed and submitted back into the brick program.
If you don't mind, Ms. Emily and Mr. Cardone, once that's complete, could we set up a meeting to maybe see, once we get the rendering from, I mean, the outcome from the consultant, to maybe see how I can develop a long-range plan for my district as far as using copper, all that project money? To just say, I can be able to tell the constituents, hey, we not gonna be able to close in all the ditches, but at the same time, we have a plan.
What we'll do, we'll try to get you an update on where they're at on the planning study for the grant, and when we think it'll be complete, and once we get that information, we'll schedule that meeting.
Okay. I do feel like the outcome of that would be good because obviously, everybody want the ditches closed, but if we have an expert or an outside agency that's gonna come in and say where we should close the ditches in, I think the public would appreciate that.
But keep in mind, you still gotta go after additional grants to make, to close them in, but you gotta have the planning document in order to even to go after the grant.
Got you. Hey, just for point of reference, have they ever had a strategic plan on how we would eventually close the ditches in, has that ever been done before?
Throughout the city?
Yeah, well, throughout the city, but not specifically for that area, that, okay, okay. The next thing, thank you, Ms. Emily, I appreciate it. The next thing, two things for Mr. Castile. When we initially talked about the pool project planning at Donna Ray Stevens, we specifically spoke about fencing that would, that would secure the area. That fence that's up there right now, which is, looks like an eight-foot fence, is that gonna be the permanent fence?
We have, we've had to make some adjustments because of the cost. So the main fence eventually is going to be brick on the Shattuck side, and we will change that fence out. It's just, most of the cost that we had available to, most of the money that we had available to it went into the pool. We made a change order to, one, heat the pool so that we can have the pool open for a lot longer, so that cost came a little higher than we anticipated. So there was a couple of adjustments that we had to do, so some things had to go cheaper.
I'm gonna make a recommendation to you and to the administration. I don't know where we get the money from, but I do not want to open a pool with that fence. I'm sorry, like, safety first. We haven't had a pool there in over 20 years. If we just gonna have an eight-foot fence, that's not gonna prevent anybody from entering that park at any time of the night. I know when I spoke with, I think it was Mr. Bresset, who was the architect on the project, we specifically talked about people having access to that pool at all times. That fence, that's the same size fence as my yard, anybody can climb that fence. If we talking about a water, a pool, like, that's not safe for anybody. And that's coming from a busy intersection of Shattuck Street. I'm willing to sacrifice funding from somewhere, we gotta protect the kids. This is something that hasn't been there over 20 years, that eight-foot fence is not gonna cut it. I'm just saying, I don't know, we need to stop the project or stop where we at, but that's just, that's, that's just, it's not, from a safety standpoint, that's not good.
We'll find it.
Okay, thank you. The next thing I want to mention, well, I got you right here, Mr. Castile, the no-wake signs. I know at one point, we said we contacted the Coast Guard behind Riverside Park.
Yes, sir.
But I've had several constituents say they don't have any no-wake signs out there.
We, and unfortunately, this shows us the sign that we don't, Coast Guard as well, we don't know the true depth of the river. We placed out six awake signs, and all of them have disappeared with the change of water. So two things, one, the depth has changes much more rapidly than we can, even the Coast Guard understood, and the current is higher than what we put the weight on. We did several brick columns basically out of buckets, and the current's just really that strong. So we're reassessing it.
All right, thank you, because from my understanding, there's been two accidents there in the last two weeks. One of them was very, like, almost nearly fatal, but that's definitely a problem. I'm talking to people who constantly out there.
Agreed. And look, we invite them to come, we have a launch, and at the end, we have a spot that people can dock. So by the creation of a launch curb, you know, blind curb, and the fact that we have docking, like, we're trying to draw people there, so that's a good thing, but it also creates a situation that we should create safety measures.
On no-wake signs too, on Riverside, I'm sorry, on River Road area. We received an email today, Ms. Renee, from some constituents that they're complaining about. They need, the need for no-wake signs is back there as well. So while we got the Coast Guard, we might as well look at that area.
We'll definitely do it, but I will say, Alex, and I apologize, that's, that river is, we're trying our best to figure it out.
Got you, got you, I appreciate that. Going back to something I said before, the mayor's action hotline. We have a lot of constituents, and again, I know the administration, the staff is doing a phenomenal job trying to effectively communicate with everybody. But we still getting a lot of people who saying, they calling, they calling, they calling, they calling, they calling. And it's almost like it's our word against their word. Before, I asked that we implement something as simple as an Excel sheet, kind of like how property standards give us this sheet to let us know what's coming down. But I think it would be, I think it would be a great point for us just to be able to tell the constituents, hey, you called on 9-9, somebody got back to you on 9/11. Because we just thought, I think we were talking about customer service, it's hard to go back and forth with the constituents that say, hey, they constantly calling, they calling, they calling. And eventually what's happening, they starting to create a narrative that may not be true. But I'm, as the educator in me, I'm big on, let's just keep the evidence, we got something right here. We can go and say, you called on 9-19, we called you back on 9/20 at this time. And I think if every council member had that, I think, I know, I can speak for myself, but I know I get a ton of calls every day just saying, I can't get nobody. I think that would just eliminate some of the things that we can just kind of look into that. The intersection of Highway 171 and Molding Street, specifically when you're heading westbound, say, leaving Washington Marion, that may be outside of us, that may be DOTD, but I'm telling you, that is a deadly intersection. Specifically for school buses, if you're trying to leave Washington Marion, you're leaving that gray street area, and you're trying to, like, say, for instance, you're headed westbound, so you at the hotel, which I'm about to talk about in a few, and the gas station of Alereau on the 2600 Molding Street, Old Richmond Suites. If you're headed there, let's just say you're trying to head westbound, getting on Interstate 10, you literally gambling every single time when you're trying to cross that.
Across all the way across.
Yeah, so I don't even know, I mean, I'm assuming they might warn the traffic center, but I don't know if that's DOTD or.
That's DOTD, we'll reach out to them.
If we can just make a suggestion, they take a look at that, I mean, it's something, I hate to say it, but we gambling every single day, especially with school being back in, you have teenage drivers.
It may be as simple as, instead of both light, the light being green for both ways, just one way that that have green.
I think that would be the solution.
I think that would help a lot.
Yeah, I think that, and I'm just thinking about the teenage drivers that's going back and forth that way with school and high school football, all that stuff that's happening right now. That might be something we can maybe suggest.
Harvey, you may want to just think about or consider just doing a resolution to DOTD, tell them what you're asking them to do.
Okay.
Instead of it just coming from the administration.
Who controls that light, Mr. John?
DOTD.
I'm talking about the signal itself?
Yes.
Okay.
Got you. Thank you, I appreciate that, I'm almost done. The old day, I talked about the old days, I'm sorry, 2600 Molding Street, the motel. I know, I know, we've sent police out there, we did, we've talked to the general managers. That place is a problem. The lauder in, especially since the store has opened back up, if it's not our Lake Charles Police Department there, that's the Calhoun Parish Sheriff's Office there. I mean, this is consistent. I even call constantly, I've tried to meet with the general manager again to, I mean, they entertaining with it, but they not. They just literally entertain us. That place is, is bad for the district. And I'm gonna be honest, I know it's supposed to be short-term housing, but it's turning into, it's bad, especially for the people who made major investments in District A to put their house back there. And it's an eyesore that that area is welcoming people into our city. So I'm just saying, I don't know if we can put something in, maybe call them back in again, but that place is, it's not good for the city of Lake Charles, not just my district, for the entire city. So that's something for us to think about.
Can we cite that under nuisance abatement?
Well, we had the chief, we told the chief and the police department to start tracking all the calls and what things that they're doing out there, and yeah, if it becomes a public nuisance, we can cite it under nuisance abatement. And eventually, if it becomes a public health, a public hazard, you can actually red-tag these places. It houses a lot of people, and I think you're right, they're using it for, I call it transitional housing, but there's been a lot of problems back there.
Got you. I know, one thing we spoke about before was that they, they continue to keep their occupational license even before the storm, so when they remodeled everything, they just kept doing the business they were doing. But I think their clientele was different. I think they were initially like attracting people who were coming in and applying and things like that. Now, they, they attracting people who making this permanent housing. And you can see when you're looking from the outside, not knocking anybody's status, but I'm just saying, like, it's really, it's bad, it's really, really bad. LC Rebound, I have a question about it. When we voted on, when we recommended the projects for LC Rebound, if we're gonna change any projects, does that have to come back before the council? Or, or do we, can you guys just? can you guys just change them, or does it have to come back for discussion and to be vote, voted on?
Yeah, it has to come back to the council by two-thirds vote, if I'm not mistaken.
So, some proj, some projects only require a majority vote of the council, some other project's gonna require two-thirds vote.
For, for any money used with Lake Charles Rebound?
Mm-hmm. If you wanna change the, uh, project itself.
The, the covenant resolution was as specific, and again, you know, we had a meeting scheduled, we weren't able to complete that meeting, we're rescheduling a meeting with you guys that weren't able to attend that, to bring an update on LC rebound and the covenant resolution. I was hoping to do it this week sometime, if, if y'all are available, and, uh, but as the mayor mentioned, uh, several of the project require a two-thirds vote, some of them require a majority vote.
Okay.
And we'll go over that with you, and let you know.
The reason, the reason I bring this up is because I know we had a conversation and for, for, I can't remember the exact reasons, but we can't, correct me if I'm wrong, the Railroad Avenue project will not continue, right?
The one that, that's the disaster recovery? Yeah, that one's not gonna.
The only reason I'm asking that is because.
Excuse me, that was not an LC rebound.
Right.
Oh, you're right, you're right, you're right. Let me go back and finish LC rebound.
Yes, sir, I'm sorry.
With LC rebound, so we, we, we don't have to come back.
No, sir, you do.
Before the council.
Majority of the projects, you have to come back to the council. In order to modify it or change it, and some of the projects are a majority of the council vote, and the others are two-thirds vote.
Okay, so Railroad Avenue, the, the four million dollars we allocated to, my thing is, I, I sold that to a lot of constituents, especially those people I'm quite sure Mayor's Action Hotline can probably attest to the things they calling about on Railroad Avenue. If we're not gonna do anything with Railroad Avenue, can we make a public statement just to tell the constituents in that area, hey, we, we've had a change of plans, we're not gonna, we're not gonna make an investment in that particular area, and this is the reason why. Can, can we just do that? Because eventually, we, we, we told those constituents down there that, hey, this was coming, we were gonna do this, and so if we're gonna change something, I would prefer it come from City Hall versus come from Councilman Hart. Not, not trying to point the football at nobody, but I'm just saying, like, I would rather it be some type of declaration saying, hey, we, we, we not gonna make this investment down here.
Yeah, and, and we'll do that, because it's, it's more, it's more environmentally driven than anything else, because of the area.
So, I can tell them that they can look for something coming from the administration?
Sure.
Okay.
As if it's ruled out.
Yeah.
I mean, if we come up with something, then we don't have to do it.
Okay. And then, that's, that's all I have. I'm sorry it took so long, but that's all I have. I just wanted to make sure, um, again, I just wanted for clarity, but, and, and I think Ms. Emily answered the question, I thank you for that, Ms. Emily, because I, I always thought it was a higher dollar amount for the brick grant, and I, I didn't know that it was just for a consultant, I didn't know it was, I thought it was to actually do the work, but I appreciate the clarity on that.
Also, Mr. Harvey, just one more time to clarify, the Railroad Avenue project was a CDBGDR grant-funded project, not LC.
Not LC rebound, thank you, I appreciate that. But, but, but we still need to make sure.
Yes. We'll get the message out, but I just wanted to clarify those funding sources.
And if possible, I know fund, funded may be limited, but the things that we were planning to do down there, could we just look for maybe funding elsewhere to try to give them some of those projects that we explained to them that was coming?
Yeah, the issue with that project was the, the funding source and the surrounding areas, so if, I mean, we could look at sidewalks or something that needs to, maybe needs to happen there, and the, in the CIP, add that to the CIP or capital, so when we look for CIP projects next year, you can add that into the CIP, and we can take a look at that.
And then.
But that would be local funding.
Gotcha. And last thing, Railroad Avenue, Union Pacific is terrible. Like, I mean, y'all, like, anybody in a white vehicle with the city logo, I encourage you guys to go tour that area, like, piles of gravel, uncut grass, I know, Ms. Paula, I know you, we, we've had a conference call with those people, they promised us this, they prom, if I'm not mistaken, Ms. Paula, aren't we actually paying to, we, we billing them, are we finding them, but we cutting the grass too? I know they, they don't take care of anything, like.
We finding them, but they ain't paying.
So, basically, the contact person that, uh, y'all had the meeting with was Drew Tresser. Uh, right now, we've actually brought the Union Pacific Railroad to hearing for the one-hundred block of Calqueshoe Street, where they have vagrants living in RVs, they're bringing inoperable vehicles, you know, uh, uh, trash and debris, just litter everywhere, and, uh, we're gonna have to end up cleaning that up and billing them. Um, every property that we have to clean up, uh, for the railroad, cut the grass, we bill them for. Um, it's just getting.
But it's a drop in the bucket for the railroad.
Right, and, um, I don't, I'll have to check and see if they even pay the bills.
So, I got a question. Is, I don't know if that's within our power, but could we create a resolution or, or ordinance, I don't know if I'm saying the right terminology, to, to, I mean, it's clear, these people are, I mean, they running straight through the city, right through the heart of my district, I'm just gonna say that. If you look at every pit stop for Union Pacific or anybody dealing with the railroad, it's terrible. I'm talking about grass, like you said, I, why, why would they even need trailers and cars? Like, I mean, it's just sitting there, like junk everywhere. It's all along the railroad, you just ride the rail or look from the overpasses, like that at every stop.
Yeah, I, I would defer to legal, but I don't believe in ordinance, you can make them, uh, like a private person you can, but a resolution to them, asking them to perform or do certain things and voice your concerns, I think might be appropriate. Question?
Anything? We'll, we'll put legal on it, yeah, 'cause I, I've, I've dealt with Union Pacific on a number of things, there, there's, there's different laws that apply to them, and there's federal preemption issues, but, uh, the property standard should not be one of them, so we'll have legal look into it, because if they're violating our ordinances, it's not related to the operations, they should have to comply like everyone else.
We, yeah, we'll look into, uh, what kind of liability they would have, they've, they've always hidden behind their kinda quasi-governmental, uh, status, but, uh, the mayor's right, if they're not, if they're, if it's not pertaining to the operations, this is just neglect, and, uh.
Gotcha.
We'll look at what liability they have.
That's cool, I appreciate, that's all I have.
Can, can we get, can we get, uh, tally of what they owe us? If we're billing and, and we don't know whether we have or haven't been getting paid, it'd be nice to know, yeah, how much they owe us at this point.
We should better put that together, we keep track of it, so we could put that together.
Yeah, I'm sure, yeah, I'm sure it's out there. Um, I mean, I don't, we don't need it today or tomorrow, but, yeah, next few weeks would be nice. And I don't know if we can file a ju, are they judgment-proof, can we file a judgment against them?
When they say the railroads were the original land barons, that's.
Oh, no, no, they're, they're almost as hard to deal with as the Corps.
Yeah. And everything that, everything that regulates them is federally preempted, which means the federal law controls everything, so, and that's what they hide behind, they say, wait, this is about, this is, this federal law says we can do X, Y, and Z, but most of those are tied to the operations, so if it's something that's not tied to operations, we'll get, uh, legal to take a look at it, 'cause I think that we can make an argument that they have to comply, especially if they're, if they're, the part that you're talking about is, is their railroad storage yards, and that's, that's always been a lot of issues, so I, I'd be interested in seeing what we can do with that, too.
Okay. And then I, I do have a compliment, I, I, I don't think I've ever met this person before, but Mr. Aldwin, um, I called, I called Ms. Renee, Ms. Chelsea yesterday, um, there's a lot of construction going on on Earnest Street, um, I mean, they leaving these big metal plates, and these plates started to move, I don't know how, but they started to move at the dismissal of schools, so, um, I think whoever would have responsible with that, man, they phenomenal response, like, they, they really came, 'cause there could have been something really, really bad, especially with the kids walking, but I don't, whoever, Mr. Aldwin, he'll tell.
That was Patrick Aldwin, he's Assistant Director of Public Works, and we'll pass that on.
Okay, thank you, I appreciate whoever was involved.
We got a call, uh, late last night, and we, we contacted our, uh, new Public Works Director, uh, Wendy Robinson, so she had somebody go out there and take care of it immediately, because apparently it was an open area.
They really reacted fast, I mean, it was right at the dismissal of school, so we appreciate that. Thank you. That's all I have.
You sure? Mayor, you said we have a new Public Works Director, can you introduce her to us?
Yes, please, uh, Ms., Ms. Wendy, could you come up? This is Ms. Wendy Campbell Robinson, she's the new Public Works Director, she comes directly over from the, from the parish, she, she retired, and we talked in to come in and helping us for a change, so she's, I went to a meeting today where she met with all of the division heads, and they went through a, a marathon of different issues that I, I think she's very excited about the job, and I wanted to welcome her on board to the administration.
Thank you. It's exciting to be here, I'm very excited to be back with the city, I was previously with the city several years back, in a different capacity, but I'm really excited to work with you gentlemen and, and get some things done, so, and I'll definitely pass that on to Mr. Patrick Aldwin about that, sir.
Also, she's a District Eight resident.
Yes, I am.
Thank you, ma'am. Okay, wanna pass on a little procedure, um, just in case the constituents didn't know, there's another remedy to solving your problems, uh, along with coming to the agenda meeting, you can fill out a card and mail it in to the City Council Clerk, and the City Council Clerk can pass it on to your City Councilman or whatever department it may be, so that you can probably get your answer a little bit faster than waiting till the next Tuesday or the Tuesday after, to come to your, uh, to come to the agenda meeting to state your complaints. Just wanted to put that out there, because that is, uh, section, Resolution one-thirty-two dash fifteen, does cover that, so we just want the constituents to know that. So, this is the portion of our meeting that we go into for public comment, we have Mr. Terrence Thomas. Come to the mic, please, state your name and address for the record.
Terrence Thomas, nineteen-twelve Second Street, Lake Charles, also Assistant Chief and Union President of Firefighters Local. Uh, we're here to talk about the two new positions that the Fire Chief wanna create, we are against it one hundred percent, because we have an issue with manpower at the bottom, and creating these positions only make the problem worse. So, we're gonna ask the council and the mayor not to accept these two positions that he wanna create. I can answer any questions y'all have.
So, uh, what you, what you saying is that we short on people?
Yes.
And we wanna create higher-paid, higher-paid jobs, but we have problems at the top. And don't we have people already do those jobs?
Yes, sir, we do.
Can you explain to the council?
If I may stop you, Mr. Bilbo, that is an agenda item that is coming up, I don't know if we can discuss that.
It was number forty-two on the agenda, and it'll be coming up, and the appropriate time would be when it comes up for announcement.
So, right now, he can speak on what he say, but the council, we wanna address it until it comes up on the agenda.
Okay.
Okay.
I, I would, I would encourage you to come to that meeting.
I, I was just informed, it's October first, is when you'd wanna, uh, show back up, Mr. Thomas.
This type of papers I have right here, is from April the second to July the nineteenth, everything in yellow is men that's missing off of trucks, and when it's, the line is all the way across, meaning those trucks were browned out, so citizens were not correctly protected, y'all could take a look at it if y'all'd like, but.
Chief Thomas, could, could you, uh, provide scanned copies of these and email them to this? Thank you.
Yeah, I, I'd like the same thing, 'cause.
Yeah, yeah, just send it, just send it to, to Renee, our clerk, and then she'd give, send it to all of us.
She could have that.
Okay.
This what I'm about to pass each one of you is NFPA standard, is a national standard for the manpower on fire trucks, and it says the minimum of men on an engine should be four people, we struggle to get two people, and when we can't get that driver or a captain, we have to shut a truck down, and it's been happening, four to five trucks every day. So, this would only add to that problem. So, we don't think this is a good move for the Fire Department, it would only further hinder our job. It's hard enough trying to get guys to work overtime to fill these positions, because they leaving their families for this, and it's just not acceptable.
That's all you got?
That's all I'm gonna give today, I'll be back for that day to get into more stuff.
All right, appreciate you.
Thank you.
Casey LeBlanc. State your name and address for the record, please.
Yes, sir. Uh, Casey LeBlanc, uh, I work for the Lake Charles Fire Department, I've been a captain, I'm here, I got twenty-six years in, I live at eight-one-five Bem's Road in Westlake, um, I just wanna, I don't know how much y'all know, I know we got some new faces, and I know we got some old faces, but basically, we have one problem on the Lake Charles Fire Department, it's a huge problem, I don't know if y'all know, but it's a staffing problem. We are short, I don't know if y'all wanna ask chief how many people we're short, but I'm pretty sure it's over forty people short, um, so that's the definition of too many chiefs and not enough Indians, and what he's proposing is to make a couple more chiefs, and it's gonna be taken from the Indians. So, just to keep it short and simple, it's not good for the department as a whole, uh, I know y'all are here on our administrative side from chief, but from the guys, we're definitely shorthanded, and it takes away from what we're already struggling to deal with. So, take that in consideration whenever y'all are debating and talking and paying attention to it. Thank y'all.
Appreciate you. Jay Dantley. State your name and address for the record, please.
Joseph Dantley, Lake Charles Fire Department, uh, thirty-five fifty-eight McKinney Street, I've been a, the district chief now three years, I've been a fireman, uh, for twenty-six years on the Fire Department, as the other guy stated, we are in opposition to making the other positions, uh, right now, it's not a good, uh, topic, um, the Lake Charles Fire Department has been ran the way it's been ran for a hundred years, and we hadn't had any problems, so we, we creating new positions at the top is, uh, it's not feasible, uh, because at the end of the day, like he says, it's taking too many, uh, guys from the bottom, pushing them to the top, and if, if this position that he's making is gonna be, um, uh, where they, he give, uh, promotion, sooner or later, those guys are gonna be out, and then we have to pay someone else to come up from the bottom, or someone else from another entity to come in and make more money than they need to have. Uh, this position is just, should be null and void for the Lake Charles Fire Department, uh, we're in very much in opposition of it. Okay?
All right.
And, uh, like Chief Thomas said, I'll be back on, uh, October first, so we can, uh, get a little bit further into it.
Okay.
Okay, all righty, thank y'all.
Keith G.
How you doing?
All right. State your name and address for the record.
Keith Grumiel, nineteen-fourteen Ethel Street.
Mm-hmm.
I was coming today because of a safety concern, I live on Ethel Street, and the two-hundredth block of Eleventh Street is seeing a high rate of port traffic and other eighteen-wheeler truck traffic coming through. This area was, is, Ethel Street itself was designed and set forth as a no-truck street. This area was, Ethel Street itself was designed and set forth as a no-truck street. Unfortunately, the LCR building is built very close to Ryan and Salier, so trucks circumnavigate by coming down my street for this. In this area is a bakery selling cookies, Joe's Party House selling cupcakes, a museum, and a ballet studio with little girls. These trucks will ride up on the embankment, ride up on property, and where the rear end of a 60-foot trailer is hitting the ground, that front end is not being watched. I'm asking for the City Council to rezone the 11th Street block of 211th Street block, to rezone it as a no-truck site in order to prevent the traffic to come in.
Where are they going?
Most of these are actually lost puppies for the Port of Lake Charles. I contacted the Port of Lake Charles and they said, contact the City Police and have the law enforcement deal with it. I worked for FEMA for over 20 years, a logistics unit lead and managing fleets and managing trucks. This is not the Lake Charles Police Authority to deal with those. That's a state federal authority to deal with DOT.
So, so basically you're saying these trucks are lost when they go through your neighborhood?
They're lost, they're getting lost and they're, and they can't make that turn, and they're having to make the easy route of the LCR. Are coming up an embankment, getting stuck, as you can see, almost tilting over. I almost got hit twice by these trucks. Definitely not, these streets are not designed for the embankment, which is natural for the, to prevent flooding. And you can see also, they get stuck on the train track several times.
So, Mr. Keith.
Yes, sir.
When these trucks get lost, where are they mostly coming from? Lake Street?
They're coming down Ryan Street, going down Ryan Street, going to the port, going to Salier.
Turn on Salier, so they, most of it is coming from I-10 or 210?
Right, I-10, I-10, down Ryan, down to, and then cutting the corner right there.
If I may make a suggestion to the administration, I think if we got with the port, first of all, and put some signage from both of those interstates, coming, showing them, hey, follow these arrows to the port, and making that a no-truck area.
Now, now, we do have, I do have businesses in my neighborhood. As you can see on Ryan and 11th, that is the Borden Plant that sits right next to me. And the plumbing warehouse, which both I communicated, and they're both outstanding neighbors. They keep their truck traffic well away, away from Ethel Street. Because they understand the safety, the paramount of the little.
So what do they do to deter their traffic?
The Borden Trucks has their own parking area. They can turn around and do their frustrated parking. The LCR building or the plumbing warehouse actually does the same thing. They just have them back in and back out. Uh, Hop Power Properties is on the corner right there. He has his trucks either back in or go down Elm Street to get out, which Elm Street is licensed for, for trucks.
Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
Uh, so this is my district. Uh, I have communicated with Mr. Grumion a couple of times about it, as well as the port. Requested a traffic study from Mr. Lynx. He completed that. Still waiting for final recommendation from engineering. Um, but I think your recommendation and Mr. Grumion's in that we somehow find a way to limit truck traffic off of the interstates on Ryan. Uh, we do have no trucks posted downtown. Um, again, that's an enforcement issue. Mr. Grumion has requested that we make 11th, uh, no trucks. Is that correct?
Just the 200th block because to prevent, because you can't prevent Borden and other facilities and, uh, on that side to have their businesses interfere with their businesses. But if you look at this one, a corner of Ryan and 11th, on 11th Street should be a sign on there, no through trucks, no port access. Then on 11th and Elm Street, a no-truck sign as well. In order, because whenever the local law enforcement have come out, they have stated as such that this is poorly signed.
Are they having a problem turning on to, off of Ryan, on to?
On the, yeah, Ryan to Salier, yes, sir. Yes, sir. Ryan to Salier, if you point to right, Mike, if you can go just above the I right there, there is, that is the entire building, and there is a solid cement post that the LCR building has put there in order to prevent damage to their building. That's their mitigation measure. So trucks, because of that precarious turning environment, are seeing that on their GPS, that they see that hard nook, they're just saying, oh, I'll just shortcut it through and go down this residential area.
I suppose what I'm saying is they shouldn't be there in the first place, right? If they're not supposed to be on Ryan Street downtown, they really shouldn't have arrived at that point.
But is Ryan up to Salier 12th? They can go past 12th? Where does the truck stop?
Well, Ryan's a state route.
Yeah, Ryan, Ryan Street's a state route.
So they can go all the way down Ryan if they.
They can go down Ryan, they can go, uh, they're supposed to be going down Salier. Salier is a designated truck route. Um, we talked to Matt before about the new bridge being built. If that will alleviate, unfortunately, it will not because 210 is not designated for truck traffic. I-10 is your designated truck traffic route.
So, Mr. Grumion, can I ask this of you? The idea that you had with, that you mentioned all of those different stops?
Right.
Can you give that to Mr. Young? And Mr. Young can get with the administration and the proper department, and we can first start to get the signage. I think that's the easiest part for us is the signage.
A truck route.
And we have to do a traffic study through Mr. Young for the neighborhood.
Right.
So we need those two things working in conjunction so at the very least, we'll have the signage.
The traffic study is completed. It's just waiting for final recommendation from engineering.
Okay, so that's already done?
Yep, yes, sir. And this is just a safety concern because of such, we have kids that run across that. Museum is parking lot is a shared parking lot, and there are kids that will bolt and run over twice cookies and give them some cookies.
Gotcha.
And like I said, I just do not want to see the most horrific sign in my, in my front window.
Well, if you can get those, those points, well, we need to put those signs to Mr. Young.
I'll have that for you tomorrow.
And we'll start on it. Appreciate you. Anything else, Mr. Young?
Yes, sir, thank you.
Can I bring up one more point, please?
Yes, you can.
I was listening to this young man's, uh.
Who, Harvey?
Harvey, earlier. Has the city, has the cities, uh, decided or even considered after five years after a hurricane, enforcing, uh, evictions or an evicted area or a, what's considered, uh, sorry, blight property, excuse me, blight property to educate the property, so the city now receives the property and then auctions it back out for low-income housing situation? Lafayette City Council does this, does this with their property that they find blight or just neglected or anything that's not used. So after so many period they'll go through, and they'll start being harsher on their, on those properties. And it encourages the city residents to bring their properties up to standards in a more timely manner. Because you're right, after five years, I don't say it should be finished, but you should have something done.
We do have a program, a blighted program. Most times it's not livable residences.
Right.
That we are worried about. It's the blighted properties that's always falling down, but that's what this list is for here.
Right, that's, that's what I'm asking is the city, does this city actually go through and educate the properties and then auction them back out with the stipulation of low-income housing?
No, not with the low-income housing, but we do auction them back out.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Linda Miles. Please state your name and address for the record.
Linda Miles, 1909 Legion Street, Lake Charles, Louisiana.
Yes, ma'am.
I am the mother of Jaden South. He passed away last year, September the 14th, 2024. I'm here because I'm a mother and I have never gotten any closure from the Lake Charles Police Department on the murder of my child. I buried my son last year on the 21st. And when I buried him, I didn't know exactly what happened to him. Couldn't get any answers from the Lake Charles Police Department. They wouldn't answer my phone calls or anything. I did receive from them a, um, accident report that is actually incomplete. And also a crash report diagram that's not even of Highway 14. And I called them several times throughout the time, the week that we were in Alexandria. And of course, they did not want to hear from me. So when I came back, the dollar wise had a footage of the accident, and I can see a black car doing about 90 to 100, and Jaden's truck spinning and overturning on Highway 14 in Union Pacific. I then turned that evidence into the Lake Charles Police Department. I believe it was on the 13th. And the officer told me that they had already ruled that Jaden went off the road and that they cannot go back and rule it an accident and then vehicle homicide. So they decided that they will not talk to me. And still today, I've been running around Lake Charles. I'm a citizen of Lake Charles. Most of y'all know Jaden. I'm pretty sure a lot of y'all here know him. But for a mother to not know what happened, I wouldn't put that on anyone. I don't know what to do. I know I have called several of y'all, and I don't, I just don't know exactly what to do. This is Lake Charles. It's sad. It hurts, it hurts my heart. I had to bury my child and I don't know. And there is someone that's out here with a black Honda Civic, because the grill was still attached to my child's vehicle when I got to the tour yard. I sent the Lake Charles Police Department that information. And it's a black Honda Civic grill that was in his vehicle. They done nothing. It never hit the news. Nothing. It's just closed, and it's gonna be a year on the 14th. At this time, when I'm standing here, just imagine me in a hospital, calling Lake Charles Police, asking them, what happened to him? You have doctors that's saying, ma'am, can you tell me? He has a laceration from here, there. Was he hanging out the window? I don't know. I don't know what to tell the people. Maybe they could have done something. I don't know. But for them not to say anything and to give me this, you can look at this and tell that is not Highway 14. Highway 14 has a middle lane. This is the, uh, police report that's not completed, and also the death certificate of Jaden. I think it's really sad, and I hurt every day.
I'm sorry to hear that, Ms. Miles. Chief, you have any response to that?
I'm Deputy Chief Codea with the Lake Charles Police Department, and I am also very sorry for your loss. I don't have any answers for you at all right now, uh, just because this is the first time I've hearing of, I'm hearing of it, but I'll get your information afterwards, and I will give you a call tomorrow and give you what answers I can.
Ms. Miles, I wish I could offer you more, but as of right now, because we are just like Chief here for the first time, but I guarantee you, we gonna follow up on it once we get a report from Chief, and we'll do our best to get you some information that would at least try and comfort you. All right?
Uh, um, I would also like to say too, um, I've had conversations with Ms. Miles several times. Um, Jaden is one of my former students, so this, this really hits home. And like I told her, I definitely send my condolences and apologies because at the end of the day, uh, I mean, she's a citizen. I remember like yesterday when it happened. Um, and I also know too, she's looking for closure, um, and what many people don't know, and I mean, with all due respect, Jaden also, uh, had an unborn child at the time. So, um, his child is here, and I just think that, um, not only his, his child that's, that he's no longer here to see, but his mother, um, deserves some type of closure. So if there's anything I can do to help, um, I would love to see that, like I say, just being my former student, but I know that hits home.
And then also with them saying that they can't overturn, you know, we can't just overturn because they already have a death certificate, and I think that, I think that's wrong.
We're gonna try to find out, get you some information. Uh, Chief's gonna get your information afterwards, and we can go from there.
Okay.
Appreciate you. Thank you, Chief. Miles Brown. State your name, address for the record, Mr. Brown, and let us know what you want to speak up.
Miles Brown, 1020 Fourth Avenue. I'll be quick. Um, I wanted to say this last, or two weeks ago, but I want to thank Property Standards for fixing that issue on Fourth Avenue and First Street with the, uh, high grass. And they fixed it within, what, three days? So it was a fast response time and everything. And, uh, only thing I want to ask is that, you know, just over the next two or three months, every two or three months, something like that, just somebody looks over it just in case it gets high again, because it does grow fast. And, uh, with everything on, I think I'll just leave it at that for today, so, thank you.
Appreciate you. Alvin Joseph. State your name and address for the record.
Alvin Joseph, 2309 17th Street, and I don't have a complaint, just a request. I was up here at the last agenda meeting and explaining about the planning and zoning, uh, the city planning and zoning commissioners, and so I'm, and I forgot to do one thing. So I would like to make a request, uh, that the, uh, a stipend for the city of Lake Charles Planning and Zoning Commissioners be placed on the agenda.
We need to have two people, I think it is, uh, Ms. Renee, uh, Ms. Rubin, to get it on the agenda? Four. We need four people to, uh, agree to put it on. I don't know if this working, Ms. Renee? Is it working or no?
It's not on.
So we can do it by voice?
We can do it by voice.
Okay, we need four people to put it on the agenda. Again, this is just to put it on the agenda. This is not to rule on it.
So, I guess, question, um, are we talking about a specific stipend, uh, like an amount, a monthly?
Yes.
And what, what is that amount?
Uh, I would like for the amount to be, uh, because we meet once a month, that $180, $180 per meeting. And that's, uh, quarterly, be, be, uh, paid quarterly to the commissioners that attend the meetings. If you don't attend a meeting, then, you know, you don't get paid. But who attend the meetings to get, uh, paid quarterly at 5:40, and that will be an annual, uh, pay of $21,600 a year.
$21,060?
$21,600.
$2,160.
Just want to be clear.
Hold on, Craig. Now, would that, would the parish be contributing anything to this?
Sir?
Would the parish be?
This is city, the city zone. Parish has their own zone. The parish, he's getting this amount from the parish, am I right?
Yes, I did. Okay, yeah.
The parish actually paying their commissioners.
Okay.
Oh, the parish paid us.
So we need four votes to put this on the agenda? Uh, yeah, well, voices, our hands. That would be sufficient?
That's sufficient.
All right. You got four? Mr. Harvey, Mr. Bilbo?
You got six?
Myself?
You got seven.
I got seven.
You got seven.
All seven.
All seven.
All right.
Can I make, can I make an amendment? $21,000?
All right. Um, any councilman got anything else? Mr. Mayor?
No, I have nothing.
It's caught on?
No, sir.
It needs adjourned.